Thank you very much. We have motion from the school board to adopt the agenda for this evening.
So moved.
Is that Miss Vino?
Yes.
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
Take from Mr. Rubin, all in favor, aye. Aye, votes no.
Madam Chair, I'll move that Board of Supervisors adopt the agenda.
A motion, do I have a second?
A second.
A motion, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
At this time, we're gonna ask the school board liaison to come and provide information to the board. We have a new, new school liaison.
Yes, Ms. Natalie Campbell, our new school board liaison.
Welcome Natalie.
Welcome Natalie, and I'm just gonna let you know, please speak clearly into the microphone, I know it's a little further than ours are right in the face so that we can hear you.
You wanna run a test?
Hello?
There we go.
Good.
Good evening, esteemed members of the school board, board of supervisors, school administrators, teachers, and fellow students. My name is Natalie Campbell, I'm an 11th grader at Rappahannock County High School. I'm an honorable student and member of the National Honor Society, co-captain of the color guard within the band program, and an actress at our school's theater company. And now, I'm the new student representative of the school. I'm incredibly honored and humbled to stand before you today as the newly appointed student representative of the school board. First and foremost, I would like to express my sincere gratitude to Dr. Grimsley and Ms. Stewart for recommending me to you for this position. And for you, the school board, for accepting my appointment to this position. I thank this board for the trust and confidence you are placing me to be the voice of my fellow students. As I step into this role, I am filled with excitement and enthusiasm for the opportunity to present, to foster positive change within our school community. Together, we have a chance to continue to facilitate an environment that not only nurtures academic excellence, but also prioritizes the overall well-being and growth of each student. I believe that efficient communication is the cornerstone of a thriving school community. I am committed to being a dedicated advocate for the concerns, ideas, and aspirations of my peers. Thank you once again for this incredible opportunity. I am ready and excited to contribute my best efforts to serve as a bridge between the student body and these esteemed members of the school board.
Aye, thank you very much. Thank you Natalie, and we look forward to hearing from you each month.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Dr. Grimsley, what in the world is this? Recognition of Board Member Appreciation Month.
Yes, item 2.6. February, not only is the month of love and Valentine's Day, but it's also where we show the love to our board members. And when we have our joint meeting each year, we also like to include our Board of Supervisors members to share the love with you as well. So in front of you, you have various cards and artwork from students thanking you for all of your contributions and your support of the schools. Mr. Hogan's Building Trades class made some beautiful bird boxes, birdhouses. And then also his welding shop made some beautiful paperweights, I guess they're. And in the bottom, you'll see that this is actually done by the students and in the shape of Rappahannock County is on the bottom with the Rappahannock County emblem. So his welding students made that for you all. We also have, before you leave, I can't hand it out now, but some special treats made by Alita Cooper and the culinary class. So before you leave, please take your little treat too. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Great, there's nothing like a letter from a child to make you feel appreciated, by the way, that they took the time and wrote something down, it was wonderful. All right, we're at the school showcase.
Yes sir. Mr. Chairman, Madam Chair, it is my pleasure to introduce Jennifer Wissinger, at this time, elementary school principal, who will present her showcase.
Good evening, thank you so much for having me here this evening and for being here. I just wanna take a few minutes to share with you some amazing things that we have going on in the elementary school. There are always new things going on, and I like to spotlight some new, some new things that are happening. So the first one I wanna start with is, sorry, he's coming, wait for my pack, I always get ahead of it. So, launched in the spring of 2020, the My Future Program is dedicated to progressively teaching financial literacy and life skills as students advance through their education at RCPS. This initiative stands out for its innovative Earn While You Learn model, supported by Family Futures, which provides students with My Future savings accounts. As they achieve milestones in financial literacy reflective of their growing knowledge and skills, contributions up to $100 are made annually to these accounts. By the time they graduate, students are expected to have nearly $1,500 saved, offering a substantial financial foundation for their future endeavors. The overarching goal of My Future is to produce graduates who are not only financially literate and skilled in life management, but also confident and ready to succeed in their chosen path post-high school, fully aware of where to find support and guidance. This year, our students, from kindergarten through 4th grade, are engaging in quarterly dynamic financial literacy programming as part of their STEAM class curriculum. Tailored to each grade level, these activities range from learning to write a check, to understanding the basics of budgeting, ensuring that students receive a well-rounded financial education from an early age. To maintain engagement and a fresh perspective to the My Future Program, the My Future Wall was introduced this fall in the Rappahannock County Elementary School cafeteria. And I remember when Ms. Capsa came in to talk with me, and she is like, "We need a space." And you know, Jenny always has those wonderful ideas, and so I was like, "This is a space that we have at the cafeteria that we really need to do something with." And so, we actually had students from the high school that are part of the art program came down and helped us create this My Future Wall. And this wall, it features a joke of the week related to financial literacy or life skills, a My Future Challenge for students to explore these concepts creatively, and a special feature bulletin board showcasing the challenge winner. And then additionally, because we're adding our My Future lessons into STEAM, there's a section also in the bulletin board that highlights the STEAM students' achievements in financial literacy and a fun fact section about those students. And so, I have a tiny little, it's not working.
It's, yeah, but we have pictures of.
Well, there's a picture of the wall there, and it's great because they said the little jokes, a special shout out to Jenny Capsa and for Erin Sherry for taking that on. But they'll send me on Thursday night, so I'll get the joke of the week and the challenge winner, and I announce them on the announcements, and the kids get all excited in the morning because they get to know, you know, what the joke was and if they got it right. So it's been great to, great to have that. And next, it's just, I just wanted to share with you a little bit from the STEAM lessons that have been going on. So each set of these lessons has an overarching theme. So our first set of lessons, they learned about types of money. And our littlest students, our primary students, learned about coins and bills, while our older ones learned about credit cards and loans. And then, our second set of lessons focused on getting money. Depending on the grade levels, our students learned about everything from the cost of labor to savings and checking, to their checking accounts. And in 2nd grade, they explored the various careers of producers that are actually right here in Rappahannock County, which was really neat to see. So there's just, there's just a few slides of the students who are, who are working on their lessons in My Future in STEAM. And then our next spotlight is our GT art program. So our GT art students have been busy exploring, discovering, and creating artworks with a variety of materials while learning new techniques and processes. As always, the students have the option to work with their own ideas and themes during class time, instead of or in addition to the main group projects. They also have the opportunity to try some digital art using Procreate, and this has been a new learning experience for our RCS GT art students. And a special shout out to Ms. Seeley, who was the one who was the mastermind behind getting that for our students so that they could use that this year. Our next one shows what some other artwork with our fairy, the little fairy sets that the students made, they created fairy houses. They're currently working on stuffies, where they basically draw, and they design their own stuffed animal. And then the next step is, they're gonna actually move into basic sewing skills and recreate these animals as part of their GT art. And so, I know if you've ever taken a tour around the elementary school, Ms. Brady does an outstanding job of displaying that art for all students. Not just GT art, but all of our students who do an excellent job in art, and she works hard at displaying that all throughout our building. And then last but not least, the Rappahannock Elementary Music Program has been moving in a more exciting, a student-centered direction under the instruction of Mr. Fuller. Mr. Fuller has implemented high expectations for students that will allow them to fully explore music like never before, while enhancing their learning through musical technology. They have been learning music through some different music productions such as Soundtrap and BandLab. And this year, Mr. Fuller took some students, gave them the opportunity to go to Tri-County Band, which Tri-County is an honor band consisting of students from Rappahannock, Fall Pier, and Culpeper Counties. And four of our Rappahannock students were invited to participate in the Tri-County Band this January. And so, I have invited them here today, these are our middle school band, our 6th and 7th graders, who are here this evening to play some wonderful band music under the direction of Mr. Fuller. Can we give another round of applause for our middle school band and Mr. Fuller, thank you so much for being here tonight. And just the last thing I wanted to share is that a coming soon event, we have, we started last year, and then we did one in the fall, but we have a family engagement night, and I just wanna invite everybody, if you have the opportunity to come, and check out our family engagement night. It is January 28th, from 5:30 to 7:30. Last time, we had over 286 students who came, we had over 100 families that came. It's just a great night, we have, it's a Dr. Seuss theme, we have various events. We get pizza for the, for families, there's all kinds of raffles and prizes. Bethany Bostic and Catherine Todd, they are kind of, my little, my little minds behind all of this, and they go out and they get, I think they're already up to like 3,200 donations with the prizes and the raffles for families to, to be able to win when they come in and take part of that. So, just to let you know that's coming soon, and thank you so very much for allowing me to share some amazing things we have going on at the elementary school. Thank you.
That family engagement night was very well attended last time.
Mm-hmm, it was a lot of fun.
Very engaging town, encourage anybody to invite someone to come.
Thank you, thank you so much. And now, Mr. Stewart, principal of RCHS, will present his spotlight.
All right. There we go. Mr. Chairman of the Rappahannock County School Board, Madam Chairwoman of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors, honorable members of the school board and the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors, Madam Superintendent and Madam Deputy Clerk, members of cabinet, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, I have the great pleasure to share with you a number of highlights that represent the work that we're doing at Rappahannock County High School during the month of February 2024. I'll hope this happens. In the first semester, we had approximately 43% of our students achieved academic honors within our defined tiers of Panther Scholars. Those are students who have a grade point average of 3.0 to 3.49. Principal Scholars, students who have a grade point average of 3.5 to 3.74. And Superintendent Scholars, students who have a grade point average of 3.75 to 4.0 and beyond. This is an academic honor structure that we've implemented this year to recognize and to honor students that do outstanding in their academics. And we believe that this achievement will be increased by percentage-wise next semester and at the next accounting of our grade point averages in May. Additionally, the high school has worked closely with our Division Director of Testing and Accountability, Mrs. Crystal Smith, to develop an attendance initiative program to recognize and reward students for coming to school, coming on time to school, and staying the entire day. Along with our revised attendance protocols and procedures that we redid this past summer, Rappahannock County High School has seen a sharp decline in chronic absenteeism and higher attendance rates for our average day-on-day membership. Most public high schools in the Virginia Department of Education Superintendent region have a chronic absenteeism rate between 27 and 34%. Last year, Rappahannock County High School's chronic absenteeism rate was only 17%. And with our current structures in place, we believe that we'll be well under the 15% target that all high schools and the Commonwealth are charged to achieve. This is a reminder, boards, that, just as a reminder rather, chronic absenteeism is defined by missing school for any reason, whether you're sick, vacation, college tour, doctor's appointment, whatever. And so, we're making great strides in our protocols, our procedures, and our incentive programs. The academic and attendance numbers show that students come to school and they're actively engaged in learning and participating in our school culture. At this time, I would like to showcase four facets of our school to add great value to how we facilitate a great student experience for our young people. First, I'd like to introduce our Scholastic Bowl team, please come as I talk about you. They have achieved district, that's right, you got them, it's okay. That's right. Glad to care about babies. They have achieved district, regional, and super-regional honors, Madam Chairwoman and Mr. Chairman. And in the future, they will compete in the Virginia High School League Scholastic Bowl State Championships to be held on Saturday, February the 24th, 2024, at Jamestown High School in Williamsburg, Virginia. I wanna recognize our Director for Athletics and Activities, Mrs. Courtney Atkins, our Coach, Mr. Dave Nazer. We have two coaches that were not able to join us this evening, Ms. Lynn Rice Takahashi, and, there she goes, there you go, shorter than me, there you go. And of course, Ms. Sarah Curry. Dave and the team, the floor is yours.
Well, I don't know what to say, I mean, the whole team showed up for tonight. Over the years, we've had some larger teams, but the makeup of this team is really awesome. And so, as you've, as you've heard, we did well in the regular season, and then we took 2nd place at the regional tournament, and then 2nd place at the super-regional tournament. And so, we are hoping to get better than 2nd place on the 24th. But even if we don't, it's an, it's an honor to get to the state tournament again. And I'm just hoping that more students will come out and join the team. I'd like to recognize everyone here, especially the jet, our senior that's going to be graduating. Next to her, Ms. Emma Brown. Ruth Cassette. And then, over here, we've got Jamison Snelson. And then, Janisaya Oshevsky. And they're going to be very entertained. And hopefully learn something. Thank you.
Women of the Board of Supervisors, you don't join us often, but we like winning at the high school. And beside our Deputy Clerk and our Superintendent are some hardware that they've earned, and I think they're gonna bring back some, I'm really confident. Can we give one more round of applause for our Scholastic Team? Thank you. Next, I'd like to showcase two faculty members, Ms. Christina Carol Farnum and Ms. Catherine Waters. Could you come up as I talk about you? In line, in line with our priority two of our comprehensive plan, which outlines our goals and efforts in the area of career preparation and workplace readiness, having these two ladies on our staff is helping Rappahannock County High School achieve college and career readiness index goals set forth by the Division Superintendent. Both of these professionals in their craft are now teachers at the high school level, and again, add value to our efforts of achieving with excellence for our students in this community. First, I'd like to bring up Tina and then Catherine. This way.
Hi, as the students know me, this is Farnum. I am the new Building Trades and Engineering Technology Instructor. It's been a long time since I've used the microphone, so please excuse me. Dr. Grimsley has a slide. There's an error going on, so keep talking, we'll get it. So, in the slide, it does showcase a few of the things that I have done with the class and before I had my own classes for Rappahannock County High School. First, you'll see when it comes up, I had the pleasure last semester to take four girls down to the Girl Power Day. That was for a bunch of, a handful of electric cooperatives. It was their initiative to introduce the electrical trade to girls only. We had a lot of fun, we were able to climb power poles. They only let us go up about eight feet, you know, liability reasons of course, but it is more difficult than it looks. The girls also operated boom trucks. Oh, there they are, so that is Alexis Perry there on the right, so she was probably six or seven feet up from there, and there's our group picture. So they got to change the high voltage fuses, that was new to me. And more dangerous than I expected it to be, especially when they fall out of the air. But we had a lot of fun. My favorite part though, was it took four girls who were not close friends, and they brought them together and really made a bond between the four of them, so I really appreciated seeing that at the end of the day. So that was fun, and I believe the next slide is the Power Generations class that I am teaching. Power Generations class consists of mostly 10th through 12th graders. Currently, right now, we are building catapults, we are building catapults to demonstrate the kinetic and potential energy. Kids really enjoy that. I was looking for a project that would grab the attention of some of my less motivated students, and I believe I was successful in this project. So we are really excited about showcasing these catapults, once they get them perfected. One thing I liked about this project too, is it allowed the kids, so what I do with my projects is I make all the students in all of my classes, I make them draft them up. Draft them to the point where they can take what is on paper and take it to the table, cut and get all their material ready, and then build it without having to go back and forth numerous times. cut and get all their material ready and then build it without having to go back and forth numerous times. With this class specifically, we were very successful with that. So the catapults, uh, one of the things that they are learning with catapults, um, is some engineering. So we didn't spend a whole lot of time with, you know, all the formulas of engineering, but through their troubleshooting, this one specifically is extremely powerful. It is really powerful. Actually, this is a modification. I think it's been modified twice before this picture was taken. Just because the power has snapped it. So as you see, their object didn't go as far as they were hoping it would have went. Uh, we did discuss that as well. Um, some of it is the shape of the bucket that they chose to use. And so they have modified it and, uh, I think the result with that is we're just gonna have to take some power away from it. Cause after about the third test run of each modification, it does end up breaking. So I think we'll lessen the power. Let me see. And so welding, I have a welding two and three class. Um, that is my third block. Recently, I had the pleasure of attending the USA Skills Welding Competition with Rich Hogan, which was a pleasure that was in Loudoun County Academy of Loudoun, I believe is where we were at there. The students here are Dalton Smoot on the right and his hood's on, but. Uh, no, we brought, um, Scott, Scott Woodward, I believe is who that is. So Scott actually placed fifth in the competition, uh, which we were really proud of. They all did very well. So in my course specifically right now, uh, we are focusing on the different positions for, um, SMAW, which is stick welding. Uh, Scott is very eager to start learning to welding, so I think I will move him forward a little quicker than some of the other students. Cause his skill is a little more advanced than the other ones that I have there too, so, uh. Yeah, so we look forward to doing that, um, each year and bringing them back to the competition. I think one of these years, um, they will get first place over a Loudoun student, which hasn't happened yet, but I think we will. All right, and then Production Systems, this happens to be this semester, uh, my favorite class that I have now. Pictured there are some of the students. Uh, this was their first project that we did. So in that class, I have a very diverse student body. So I have, um, some very green and experienced eighth graders and I have, uh, two seniors who have taken the shop class, not this one, but a shop class and have experienced a couple of times. So I started them off with a simple project as a picture frame. I gave them the opportunity to do butt joints or mitre joints. To my surprise, they all chose to do the more challenging mitre joint. And they turned out really well. Um, I was quite surprised at their efforts. Brenna, as you can see, um, I showed her the laser that we have in the classroom one day and she really wanted to see it work, so, um, we took some extra time and lasered her name into the picture frame. We'll be incorporating that too with the picture frame we're making for, uh, Officer Huben over here, so. Also, Production Systems, we have a big project in the workings here. So we are building a man cave she shed, so I wanted to keep it diversified. You know, the seniors wanted it to be a man cave, um, but I said, well, no, we might not be building this for a man, you know? So, um, there's gonna be quite a bit work rated in this. I wasn't going to do it, but the two seniors that I had really wanted to do a big project. So, you know, it's their senior year and it's their last semester, so, you know, I took a deep breath and I said, okay, let's do this. So that's what we're doing. Um, I do plan to have this auctioned in May, um, so there'll be more information to come. Um, I'll be contacting Rappahannock News as well to start coming out and checking out our progress and getting word out for this auction, so we can have, um, you know, good attendance for that. But there will be more to come on that. I don't want to ruin all the surprises here. And Christina, can you just remind us about your, a little bit about your background? Oh, okay, so, um, I formerly, before this, uh, I was a pipefitter and welder with Local Six O Two for sixteen years. I have done a very diverse career with them. I've done inspection, testing, maintenance, surveying. I've worked on jobs as small as two-story, um, like renting office buildings, to government office buildings, high security government office buildings. I've been in the Supreme Court, a couple CIA buildings. The last few years I was there, I got to where I really wanted to be and that was in the industrial world. Um, so I started out with a semiconductor plant and, uh, did the liquid natural gas plant in LNG, um, that was over in Cove Point and, um, have also built a natural gas power plant. So that, I really enjoyed that and I was happy to make it there in my career. So there's a lot of experience that I have mechanically, um, that I hope to share with our students here in Rappahannock County. And we appreciate that inspiration for our young ladies too in the trades. Yes, absolutely.
Christina is phenomenal in the projects that she's gonna bring to our school and our students are, I'm looking forward to. I'm gonna put it in a beat if I get permission from my wife. Cat Waters, come forward.
Good evening. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank all of the board members, school board members for being here tonight and, uh, especially Mr. Seward for giving me the opportunity to speak in front of you this evening. I promise I won't take too much of your time. Um, but my name is Catherine Waters. I am currently working at the high school, teaching the intro to healthcare professions. I also work and serve as the Recruitment and Retention Coordinator for Fire and Rescue in the county as well as staffing the Quick Response Vehicle, also known as ALS fourteen hundred. And my purpose here tonight is to highlight the class that I've been able to host within the high school. When I first moved out to Rappahannock County, I, like many others, fell very, very in love and, uh, was captivated by the beauty of this county. And I began volunteering and working, uh, with the county and I loved being able to help those who I lived closely with. But I still had to drive to get deeper and closer to my community. Um, the high school and I first crossed paths when we were first planning, um, the first ever mock car crash for the high schoolers, uh, right before prom, that we've now called the Aftermath Program. Um, and by the grace of God, it went absolutely flawlessly, went from my very first attempt, so whoop. Uh, the partnership has since grown into an incredible working relationship with the high school that I never even saw as a possibility. If you picture yourself going to Costco on a very busy Saturday, the kind of little silver lining that you get when you go to Costco is tasting all the samples that you get when you roam through the aisles. If you picture my classroom as Costco, being able to sample little bits and pieces of what healthcare has to offer, that's kind of my classroom summed up in a nice little nutshell. Um, I like being able to create a, an environment for the students to be able to try multiple different, um, things within healthcare. We do focus primarily on first responder based, uh, professions such as firefighting, EMT, paramedic, flight, um, and some healthcare options within the hospital. Um, I also tailor my class very much to my students' interests. If they want to become a doctor, I'm gonna get them in touch with doctors. If they want to go off and be in the military, I am very thankful my husband served in the military as a combat paramedic. So he's an excellent resource. Having those ties to the community and outreach is huge and allows for a beautiful environment for these students to be able to grow. Uh, we've discussed many options with the students on how they can accomplish and obtain certifications with little to no money down, which is a big deal in our community and for some of their families. During the time that they're with me, they get at a minimum BLS CPR certified, which a lot of the instructors in the school were able to get this past year. Um, but they leave so much more, uh, than just one certification in my class. We talk about, if you ask my students what word I use a lot in my classroom, they're, they're gonna say accountability. I truly believe, uh, accountability needs to be instilled in our, in our younger generation. And, um, um, I believe creating self-aware and held accountable students sets them up for success in the future. So I'm very thankful for this opportunity to be able to host this class and I look forward to being able to grow it. Um, we're hoping that next year we can create an actual EMR course, which is Emergency Medical Responder. That way the students will actually be able to have a nationally registered certification to be able to run calls in the county. Also, I'd like to point out, my students are extremely eager to volunteer and a lot of them have actually signed up and submitted applications, which is incredible. So I'm killing two birds with one stone, which is really, really thankful. But this is all made possible by Mr. Seward and the boards being able to give me this opportunity. So I look forward to being able to grow this program with you and to help our community the best that we possibly can. Thank you.
I don't think it's lost on anyone in this room that in the world of career and technical education and in the fields, that those are dominated by males. And one of the things that we're extremely proud of at Rappahannock County High School is that we have male teachers, but we have two dynamic and strong women leading these programs and inspiring our students and getting more volunteers. I was talking to Cat last week and we're gonna see the volunteer numbers in this county rise because there's an active footprint in the school. We're gonna see more women welders in the Commonwealth at North Brumman and all the big shipyards across the country, particularly in the mid-Atlantic states, because of the work and the experience and the connections of Tina. So if you give them one more round of applause, please. Lastly, I want to pay special recognition to the Rappahannock County Public Schools Teacher of the Year, Mr. Scott Stevens. Come on up, big guy. He's gonna kill me. Along with our Deputy Clerk, he's a native of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Scott has been a public educator in Pennsylvania, North Carolina, and Virginia for almost twenty-five years. The one word that I would use to describe this giant of a man is flexible. We're not gonna talk about that today. Yeah. I'm sure he dreads when I come to visit his class during the day because he knows I'm coming to ask for something and his help and support is one of the things that I treasure. As recently as today, he was my thought partner both professionally and personally. And Scott, I appreciate that conversation we had earlier today. He is loved by his students and highly respected by his colleagues. Scott's, Scott's name has been forwarded by Dr. Grimsley, our Division Superintendent of Schools, so that he may be in the running for the Virginia State Teacher of the Year. Scott is joined by his lovely wife here, uh, at this presentation. Ladies and gentlemen, the Rappahannock County Public Schools Teacher of the Year, Mr. Scott Stevens.
I'll keep this brief. Twenty-two years ago, I, uh, moved to this company and got the opportunity to teach here. This place has seen, uh, the absolute lowest of the lows in my life. It's also got me through some of the, or I, has also got to see some of the very best parts of my life too. I got to share it here. Uh, and for that, I'll be eternally grateful. I am both humbled and honored by this. I'm overwhelmed by this. Thank you. Thank you.
As you can tell, Scott's very verbose. Uh, Scott, on behalf of the Division Superintendent, the school board, um, we appreciate you, your wife, the sacrifices that you've made as a teacher, the mentorship that you provide. You're a good brother. We appreciate you, man. Madam Superintendent, Madam Deputy Clerk, members of the school board, that is the high school and the elementary schools' school spotlight for this evening.
Are there any questions for either of the principals tonight? Think you've covered it all?
Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Okay, the next item on our agenda is item three point two, a transportation update. So every year during budget time, this concept does come up quite a bit about the costs of running our fleet. So I'm gonna pull up a transportation update. And in the words of Mr. Kirwitson, we're gonna say optimizing the fleet. And how do we do that and all the aspects of that? But it's, it is a great question and one that, um, really does deserve community discussion. It's something we need to talk about frequently, plan, uh, long-term, and set some goals around. So, um, it's my pleasure to, um, give you this presentation, but also recognize that Chris King, our mechanic, is here as well in case there's some oddball question that I can't take on. He's here, he's got my back. Uh, so like everything else in a public school, transportation is heavily regulated by the state. Uh, there are codes regulating the, um, and the first and foremost is the transportation of children. Greatest care shall be exercised at all times. Um, and then there are different subcategories and subsections in that code. Um, but one that comes up is review of routes. How do you optimize for efficiency? Um, and that's regulated to school bus routes, school sites, safety of pupils at designated school bus stops shall be reviewed every year and, and as changes occur. Routes shall be reviewed for safety hazards, fuel conservation, and to assure the most efficient use of our school buses. And local school administrators shall evaluate the safety of pupils at bus stops periodically and shall, at the request of the local school board, report the results annually to the board. Uh, so that's in Virginia code. That's something we have to do. And there are also reporting requirements, uh, that, that follow those codes as well. Uh, so the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, uh, provides bus safety evaluation bus, at bus stops. And that's something we've used from time periodically to make sure that the bus stops are as safe as possible. For instance, you don't want your students at pickups having to cross the highway. Uh, you wanna always try and strive for, um, making sure that you pick up and drop off on, on the right side. There's easy bus stop access, waiting location safety. An issue that we had several years ago, I know when we first, when I first came aboard as superintendent was we had a lot of our stops that didn't quite meet the criteria under safety in particular, like with an escape route or safe turnaround, which creates a safety hazard that you really do not want to run into. Um, so we had to do some modifications with that and sometimes tell folks that we're sorry, we can't make it to your door anymore because of this route is no longer, it doesn't meet the criteria. Uh, so that's what we use to evaluate different stops. And from time to time, we have to reevaluate those. Safe turnarounds are a biggie in our county to make sure you have a safe turnaround. Otherwise, you're doing kind of a big circle in a certain way. And turnarounds, if you don't have the clearance, you're turning around in a lot of folks' driveways and you need permission to do that. And if they say no, you have to continue on until you find a safe, um, area to turn around. Uh, so those are the types of things that we, we evaluate that way. Um, you hear a lot about passenger capacity in buses and I, I know you've heard me say before seventy-seven passenger versus sixty-five. And there's some things I learned going through bus driver training myself I never really knew. So when we say the manufacturer capacity is seventy-seven passenger, it's really only fifty-six because the manufacturer measures it by the hip width of a young elementary school girl, three to a seat. So that's when manufacturer says seventy-seven, that's what they mean. As you can see, we combine our, um, both schools, so we have very large high school boys sitting on the bus as well as our young elementary school children. So, and it does require some space in between. Uh, so it's more like fifty-six when we say seventy-seven, whereas sixty-five passenger act, actual capacity is more about forty, forty-six passenger. And those are your type C buses. Uh, these are, uh, description of all of our routes, um, and they are reviewed. Typically, we want to stay as close to about an hour threshold as possible. Having children on a bus for any time more than an hour can create behavior issues, you know? And that is quite a long time. Uh, so, so we do look at that. We do have a couple, uh, that do exceed that and a couple of those routes that we combined because of ridership and numbers. Uh, so you can see those here as well. Route review, maintaining and improving efficiency, we do that through different reporting tools like the Maintenance of Transportation Operational Cost. Report through the State Department of Education. We have to report any incidences or accidents. We have to report all of our routes, mileage, ridership. Um, we do comparisons through the, that state tool. Um, and then there's a Driver Background Vacancy Report. So this is all reported through video. So this is all reported through VDOE through our SSWS platform. And then what VDOE does to help you analyze your own efficiency, it compares you to a cluster demographic. And it takes your cluster demographic that has similar amount of riders, similar amount of land area. And this is our cluster group comparison listed here, all of these various counties. And then it gives you your indicator, miles, operational cost per mile, and then your per pupil cost. And it breaks that down. So our CPS total miles is 102,412 compared to our cluster average of 230,791. So we do less than, about half of our cluster demographic, which is really efficient. And a big reason why is we don't do double routing. A lot of other school systems you'll see will not put high schoolers on with elementary kids. So they have a lot of double routes. So you will see that. Operational cost per mile lifts slightly up over our cluster average, but our per pupil cost is far less. So that tells us for efficiency that we're in good standing. So all of our school buses do have to meet or exceed minimum requirements and specifications, emissions if they meet that year mark. So we have to have those inspections done. These are the different types of school buses that you can purchase. So there's type A. Those are your activity buses. And unless they're yellow, you cannot use white activity buses to pick up at stops. That's illegal. But if it's yellow, you can. Let me change just the color. It has some other features, too. Type B is your, what's typically known as your special education buses or has ADA accessible transport. Type C is our, your most typical, found in schools, your 77 or 65 passenger. And then type D, which we haven't had in a long time, but those are your rear-engine big buses. So here's just a little description of what they are. No CDL is required for your type A. And we did make a decision to switch to a couple of activity buses rather than a full bus purchase based on responsive to our ridership in that year. And that has saved us quite a bit. You don't need a CDL. Smaller teams can take them on trips. You don't have to rely on your driver and pulling them out of a route when you have a limited supply of drivers and subs. So those have been super helpful. Type B, I believe we have two of those. One that's more operational than the other, but you do have to have one operational on your fleet. And those, both of those are pretty old. And I'll show you that list in a moment. Type C, we talked about those. Similar fuel mileage, eight to 10 miles per gallon on type C diesel fuel. And then your type D is your bigger passenger, but less common for your regular routes. There are eco-friendly options. So you have electric buses. They do require quite a bit of investment upfront to make sure you have the infrastructure to be able to, make sure you can charge them, work on them, diagnose any issues. The costs are really high. Even though there's a lot of grants and rebate programs that you can get in on, we don't really qualify for a lot of those many times. We've tried to get piggyback on other counties that have like a regional grant program, but that has been difficult because the upfront cost is still usually more than purchasing a regular bus. Propane, that's catching on a little more. And that's a similar cost to regular buses. I know our shop is, it'd be great, actually, to think about maybe a propane option eventually. They are cleaner energy, lower lifetime cost. It definitely reduces ongoing maintenance costs throughout term. But again, that's going to take a discussion about how we want to do that. It will take some build-out and infrastructure and investment upfront to switch over to those. But they're options. So challenges with the fleet. It is expensive to maintain a fleet of buses. Unstable fuel costs have been kind of all over the place since COVID. It definitely was, our expenditures on fuel was a lot lower, of course, because we weren't traveling so much and we didn't have as many events. Fuel prices are, look like they're coming back down, stabilizing a bit. Diesel exhaust fluid, your DEF and motor oil costs just continue to rise, so you have to watch those. And anything after 2014, I believe, has to have DEF. So we have to make sure those meet emissions requirements. So current costs of school buses. So the school buses are quite a bit of money for each one, as you can imagine. This is the comparison. So your type A, 50 to 80 for your activity. Type B, 100 to 140. Your type C is 130 to 160 right now. Type D are pushing upwards of $200,000 right now each. This is, this is what gives me heartburn while we're trying to put a plan in place where we can replace the fleet as they age out. So bus prices have increased 68% on those type C diesel buses since fiscal year 17. So that's a significant increase. We're on, we can purchase through state contract, which gives you the best rate, and this is what they're at. So it is concerning when we're trying to figure out and planning ahead for replacing our fleet, for sure. This is our fleet. These are all the buses that we have, and those are in your presentation as well with the planned replacement year. By code, one of those codes is that we do have to have a replacement plan, whether or not the funding is available to be able to purchase those buses. On the schedule, it was sometimes up in the air. But this is the planned replacement year. The recommended replacement schedule of a school bus is about 15 years, though for rural districts with the kind of terrain they have, 10 to 12, depending. And just to give you an idea, one of our 2014s needed a very expensive engine worth $23,000 worth. So it's not cheap to upkeep those buses either. Buses cost considerably more to maintain after they accumulate higher mileage, of course, just like your car. But with the state reg, higher annual mileage accumulation, you can use it as a criterion to try to shorten the lifetime to, on a replacement schedule or rebate program if you're a part of that. But it should not be used to, as a criterion, to use them for an extended number of years based on that state reg from the Association of State Directors and People Transportation. Something to think about as we look at those mileage, the mileage on our fleet as well. So other options for thinking about long-term. Last time that a lease purchase option was perused by the board was back in 2014. I believe they purchased five buses, if I recall. So here's the option for those, what the installment payment would look like, and the grand totals, interest over principal over the course of five years. That helps stabilize your payment, and you get all five buses at one time. You can also extend that over seven years. So that's just an example of one of the options that's out there under state contract. So something to think about as we're trying to maintain that fleet, it's something we have to do. We have to transport kids. And right now, we have two operational spare buses for our regular routes, so two. And those are, I love Bus Six. That's my bus I like to drive. She's old, but she's reliable, but she's getting up there. So we've got to think about replacing those regular route buses as well. Your expense breakdown is as follows. Of course, your full-time drivers, bulk of your spending, your repair costs, fuel, equipment purchases. Those are the, that's the bulk of transportation. We have taken a lot of cost-saving measures in every department and looking under every stone. So when we started, we had 18 routes. We did reduce that to 15 in responsive to ridership. And it may add a little time and lengthen the route. We try to stay reasonably to meet that criteria for mileage. We don't like it to go over an hour if possible. We do combine elementary students with high school students on our routes, eliminating double routing. And I can tell you, subbing the routes, our high schoolers do a good job of helping, at least when I'm on there, they help me with the ones. I do appreciate that. They're good helpers. Our shop also provides maintenance of school, county, and sheriff's office vehicles without any labor charge, which is a huge cost savings, shared resources kind of agreement. We, they, our guys are wonderful. They do try to take on probably larger jobs than they should from time to time. So we do have a little bit of a checklist of, here's the things we're able to efficiently handle on time. Here's what we're stocked with. But that can always be under review as well. We did have, we modify our year purchases based on ridership. So when we purchased the two activity buses versus a regular bus, we did that a couple of years ago. We were able to get a bus last year out of ESER funds, a type C bus, because that was a permissible use. So we used our federal funds to purchase that. Our original plan did have our infrastructure operations money as our placeholder to purchase a bus. But we did move some of that money around last time. So we're going to have to look at hopefully adding some back to, if that's how we're going to continue to purchase our fleet. Reduce costs and extended life of both steer and drive tires by switching to straight tread rather than aggressive tread. Right, Chris? Okay, that's what he told me. Streamlined all systems and upgrades to Cummins engine types so that reduces your diagnostic costs when you're not having to deal with so many different systems that don't speak to one another and diagnose them in order differently. So that really has streamlined the work that they do in the shop as well. Regular routine preventative maintenance performed on all vehicles and buses to extend their life. So there's just a few to mention. So thank you so much for your help in ensuring our CPS students arrive to and from school safely and to all their events. Any questions or suggestions in this area are definitely welcome because we do have to plan, and costs keep coming up. So I welcome the board discussion on this.
Thank you. My favorite topic. And I know a lot of work went into preparing that. I really appreciate it. And I think it's, it's an important exercise for us and for the public to see the effort that you have made. And it seems a sustained effort to take advantage of different vehicle sizes and types and all the route information and the vacant, or empty seats shown for the different routes is all very helpful. And your breakdown of expenses is also very illuminating. And I noticed in the second-to-last slide, there's, yeah, that one. I just wanted you to expand a little bit, the fourth bullet point in the left column. So could you just describe what that, what you're capturing there?
Oh, yes.
You're modifying your purchases. It sounds like that goes to the heart of the optimization question.
Correct. So when we purchased the activity bus instead of our larger buses, but also in our type C, we only purchased, for a while now, type C medium, which 65 passenger.
Got it.
Sorry. To be clear. So yes, those have been reduced based on our ridership enrollment. It is good. We do have several of our, let me go back to the fleet slide so you can see. We do have some 77 passenger that are larger that are helpful when you do have bigger trips and grade levels. So you do want to have a variety there, so we do. But our, you can see our more recent purchases have all been Thomas 65 passenger, and then our activity buses before that. So it's been quite some time since we've purchased a 77.
Thanks again. And I think the takeaway from this, for me at least, is it is reassuring that you are clearly active in taking frequent looks at your fleet and optimizing your fleet and covering routes and getting students safely to and from school. And it's that ongoing analysis and scrutiny of your own system that I think reassures us and helps us in fulfilling our duties to Rappahannock County taxpayers while you fulfill yours to the students and families of your school system. So thank you for all the effort in the presentation and all the ongoing effort that the presentation reflects.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anything, board members?
I'm just curious, on your, the list of buses, Bus Seven, why is there an NA by replacement year? I'm just curious.
Because at the time, we had two ADA-equipped. We really only need to have one on, so we're not going to replace that one. But the next, Bus 21, our other ADA Uber, should be looked at pretty soon.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
I did have a couple of questions. Is there truly not a in-between, an A and a C, a 14 to 16 passenger, and then you go to 45 to 70? There's nothing in the middle?
Correct.
Wow.
Now, you can, right. I mean, you can purchase those, the special buses that do not maybe have the ADA equipment, might get your seatage a little higher, but it's still going to be very comparable in price. Might as well get the, you know, more seat with the same mileage, so. And that's important to know. So people may not know the types that are available to you.
And then the other question I had was the cluster group. What are the demographics that created that particular group of schools?
So the Department of Education does that automatically. So they pull you and create a cluster demographic based on a similar land area of your county and a similar number of riders pulled from ridership, regular route ridership. So when they pull that, they take those that are within that range, and then they take a cluster demographic average and compare your county to that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one more question. Between type B and type C, and this is probably more for your shop.
Yeah.
Obviously, I see the difference in the miles per gallon. What about maintenance? Is there a huge difference in the cost of maintenance between the smaller buses and the largest, larger buses?
Use the microphone, Chris. Thank you.
Yeah, so not really. We change our oil filters every 10,000 miles on our school buses now. For the gasoline, we do every 5,000, or what the manufacturer recommends. But the type B and type C, there's really no difference. It's still the diesel engine. It's still, it's still got to be the same maintenance done to it.
I did have one, one more follow-up question on the, since Chair Donahue raised the question of the methodology for putting that, the cluster of localities together. If you're my attention back to your per pupil cost? And how does, if you're, I'm just trying to understand the math and how you compare so favorably to the average in the cluster. I assume these are generally pretty small districts. What's the background on that quite favorable per pupil cost? What's driving that?
I would say just simply from these indicators that the total mile is, miles being cut in half is a huge indicator of you're spending a whole lot less per pupil because of the number of miles that you're traveling, so much less than the cluster average. But they have you input all of your expenditures, your ridership. There's a lot of inputs into the tool that VDOE uses to determine that number as well.
That mileage is directly related to the fact that they're single routing. They're putting all the children on one bus.
Yep.
And they've taken a huge swing at the transportation costs, as you can see, nearly half, by taking, making that decision. That's very unusual.
I mean, that's, if I were to isolate one number that made me feel very good about the work you're doing, I think that was it. Because again, I think, all things being equal, we're looking at a cluster of rural, small communities. But yet, that savings cannot be overlooked. I mean, that's, as you said, a half, basically, so. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Our next item is our budget building blocks, presentation we do each year. So chuckle because the blocks are kind of all over the place in the state, so. But we're going to go over what those foundational building blocks are as we build this budget at this point in time at this point in time, and those cost projections that we're thinking about with the information we have. Of course, all of our, everything that we do, including building the budget, supports our vision and mission for the district and relates right back to our comprehensive plan. Our key considerations for fiscal year twenty-five directly aligned with our comprehensive plan, we, of course, staff increases and what the state is going to do with the standards of quality, compensation adjustments, actual enrollment and average daily membership, a big driver in how our school is currently funded through the state, retaining and recruiting our talented staff, as you can hear, we have so many wonderful people, and it's, that's what makes the magic happen at our CPS, so we can't do anything without them. Advancements in technology. So this is something that is definitely on the radar of every school district right now, not just with the device usage, but the advancements in artificial intelligence and social media platforms and the issues around that. So advancements in technology, standards are being developed as we speak around AI integration in the school, and we are actually participating in quite a bit of that on-the-ground research and implementation as well. So we're trying to be as, you know, trend-setting as we can with that, but being careful as well. There's a lot to learn, a lot to harness, a lot that's terrifying all at once, so it's something that we need to look at. Capital improvement needs always on the radar because those things can, as you saw, purchasing one bus and fixing one cooling tower or one HVAC system or, those things can add up, so making sure that we're maintaining our facilities. And of course, any new state mandates, there were over forty bills still being considered as of this week that may have an impact on what we, what we have to spend. So we're monitoring those as well. Every year, we put out a community budget survey to see what priorities by category that the community has as their priorities. By far, parents were our largest respondents, our largest responding group. Here's the planning priorities from the community survey based on this fiscal year, currently this last year's survey, and then the fiscal year twenty-five planning priorities. You can see the top four are pretty much the same with a little bit of a switch with small class sizes in career and tech, but taking care of our teachers, maintaining our small class sizes and intimate environment, and career and tech ads seem to always kind of make it to the top. Curriculum enrichment last year versus school safety is moving up a bit. Mental health made the top ten list, and that's the first time I've seen that. Not surprised, though. We do have a lot more support and not enough, really, but more of that is definitely needed. And our students are accessing more services and referring for more services, so that does help. So our SOQ funding process, just real quick, this is from Dr. Regenbal from Fiscal Analytics, and he gives a comparison about what an SOQ funding process right now in Virginia looks like. It's a staffing ratio-based funding formula. The state, I don't know if you've heard that, but based on the Jay Lark report that the General Assembly undertook, that study, they are, they are really pressing for more of a student-based formula rather than staffing ratio-based. Could be great, could maybe not be. So what I've been pressing with the state, as much as even last week I was talking to the state superintendent about this, whatever you do with the, the funding formula, if it's student-based, it cannot be subject to something like the LCI or it will do nothing for us. In fact, it will probably take us down because of small numbers. So hopefully, they will be looking at that, but we're going to be at the table as much as we can. They are looking at different funding models, the Board of Education currently from different states. They can be advantageous, but they keep saying that they're going to try to maintain at least, so nobody, there's no losers in whatever they switch. And it's probably going to be a ten-year process to overhaul the funding formula completely, but there are bills currently that will do some of that now. SOQ positions, your standards of quality, what's covered under SOQ, we've covered that before. Tiny percentage of what you should have in the SOQ is what the state will fund. For us, much less, about seventeen percent of what the state says you have, they will give you that much because of your local composite index. The local requirement for that position is actually eighty-three percent. So for each position they say, you're covering most of that locally because of that composite This is the calculus for the local composite index, again from Dr. Regenbal. So you can see that the largest weight is your ADM, measuring it two-thirds. So that, that's the one I know that's in the SIF team, our School Innovative Finance Task Force from the last couple of years, the work they did said, and one of the recommendations, that is one of the things that we probably have more influence over that will make a difference in your local composite index. So that's something we have been working toward. Here's your overall trend in enrollment, average daily membership. So it shows your preschool and then your K-12, and that has to be separated out because your preschool numbers are not included in your average daily membership numbers. They receive different streams through VPI, so your Virginia Preschool Initiative Fund helps you support your preschool numbers. So that is being changed as well. It looks like the cap on the composite index adjustment, it was point five. So what that meant was that any county that had an LCI of point five or greater, they would give you funding based on a point five max cap. So you would get more money even if you were a more affluent county from what they have your designation as. So that's being lifted, so our point eight.
Oh, wow.
So right now, it may, we'll see what happens. So that has an implication of reducing the revenue we receive for our preschool, which is a major issue because that's something we've been tackling for many years. And we have been in contact with CCLC and talking about partnerships and how we can still leverage all of the resources out there. There are going to be new funding streams available for childcare and preschool, so hopefully, if we can all work together, we can find a way, because I know CCLC is maxed. If we are limited on funding on what we can do here, maybe we can share some resources, space, we'll see what we can do there. But a lot to be answered. Your K-12 enrollment, and then your average daily membership. So that's always a little bit different, the way it's calculated based on your average daily attendance, and it also removes any of your deductions from ADM. So for outplacements, foster, other students you're still responsible for academically and keeping the educational records or scholastic records, but for whom they, there may be other funding streams supporting those students, so they remove them from the ADM. That much says. So we're looking like we're ticking up a bit, we're not dropping as we have been. At one point, we had lost over ten percent in, within a ten-year period, so that's looking better. So some scenarios for consideration based on some of that information. The governor's budget, these are the revenue estimates based on the governor's budget that he has proposed. There's a lot of changes being proposed in each chamber right now. Budget Sunday is this Sunday, so hopefully, we'll find out some more definite information about what's being proposed there. But as you can see, the big bump in lottery funds was due to our special supplemental basic aid cap adjustment that was made and actually in the governor's budget. Our bills in the, the House that we were trying to pass through, they did get gently laid on the table. So it's, yeah, so doubtful that that's going to pass this year. We won't stop working toward that. That would have changed the enactment language to remove the cap indefinitely, as long as that formula is still in place. It's in the governor's budget very specifically, and it even states Rapid County County. So it's pretty solid there, but you don't know what might happen in the chambers or behind closed doors in conference. So we're very hopeful that that's there, but we have to plan for a scenario where it may not be. And if you just simple math there, losing that one point five million in that state revenue puts you out of deficit from where you were last year in revenue. So that's something we'll have to plan for as well. So compensation, what does it cost, these percentage increases? For us, it's going to cost us a lot more in our local money because we're only getting seventeen percent of what they say you must do for, for your staff, which makes it very challenging for our county to keep up with our neighbors who have much lower LCIs, get a lot more state money to do that, so then they say, oh, well locality, let's add one or two more percent. So for us, that's really tough to catch. So the governor right now in his budget has a one percent bonus in the first year of the biennium. Year two, a two percent salary increase for school SOQ-funded positions. Amendments in both chambers are pretty, make me very nervous, so ten to twelve percent increases over the next two years. Initially, there have been supplement now to those bills where they have removed the percentages. Makes me feel a little better, but they're still, they still have the language about moving toward the national average. So we don't know yet, and what was weird about the amendments that were in the chambers with their compensation adjustments was that they bridged the biennium, which is something I've never seen before, with an enactment of year one, July one, twenty twenty-five. So that's not, you see what I'm saying? So that second year increase would actually bridge the biennium for which they're not responsible in a budget, they can't really control that. So I think that's probably why they've kind of revamped and said, we're not going to put dates or percentages just yet and watch what happens. On paper, it looks great when you're campaigning and doing things to say, you know, we're trying to make these adjustments, but the how is tougher. So what does that cost for us? A one percent bonus would cost us with our current staff about seventy-five thousand nine hundred fifty-eight dollars. A step increase, which is what our mechanism is for your COLA adjustments, your cost of living adjustments each year, about one and a half to two, depending on where you are on certain scales. And that's what we used to use to give raises before we had a lot of these mandates coming down where you would just get your step every year, and that's what you would meet, equivalent to your years of experience or investment in BRS. So that's about what a step increase would cost, one sixty-seven, two forty-two, and so forth. Ten percent is just about a million dollars. So that's why we get nervous when they say that. We will not receive nearly as much compensation supplement as other counties will because of our local composite index. We are planning for about an eight percent insurance increase, not as much as last time, but it's still pretty high, ninety-eight thousand for that. And I know it was the direction of the school board to try to absorb as much of that cost as possible because we already passed on premium cost to our employees last year. So trying to maintain that is very important for our staff. And then BRS reduced rate from the previous year, that's looking at fourteen point two one percent. So those are the pieces we're sort of planning scenarios around. Here's our teacher salary benchmarks. We lost a little bit of footing with that oomph on the five percent and then the two percent mid-year for our first-year salaries with bachelor's degrees. But here's a quick comparison of those throughout each of the year benchmarks, and I've ranked them too, so that's easier to see in a moment. So here's your master degree salaries. So Rapid Hanuk on our first year, we did all that work to compress those and gut that up, and we finally got there, and then we got pushed down again, compensation adjustments and other counties could do a little bit more, but we're holding it in for our fifteen-year and our veteran teachers, looking pretty good there. But we may have to look again at our, getting our starting salary up because that's a huge recruitment strategy too for your, beginning year teachers. Same with the masters. And then our capital improvement, facilities needs, we're about to finish this year, it'll be completed in June, the five-year compression into two years that we did with that one-time infusion. So our capital improvement plan is in really good shape there. We've planned out kind of to keep on the cycle and just keeping everything the way we want it to be and working well and the regular maintenance you have to do, and then also the cycle for remodeling classrooms and painting and all that is planned out here through fiscal year thirty-one. So it gives you a nice, you know, longitudinal outlook. There are a few things in here that we feel like we can probably do a, launch a fundraising campaign with some community groups, like the auditorium, sound lighting, that kind of thing is really great for our community and is a great space to be used. It's very expensive to do that, so which is why that probably gets pushed down a little bit more over the more, you know, needier needs in the buildings, but that's something that is on the priority list, especially with our Fine Arts Academy, our Arts Academy performing arts going on. So that's something that is on the radar. But that's your overall look. And then, of course, our sandbed sewage treatment plant we've been talking about for years, still no idea when those EPA guidelines are going to change, kind of letting us know what we can do with that, so that's still kind of pushed off with a placeholder, so that you can kind of get an idea. But not outrageous, we've made a lot of progress over the last seven, eight years, and so if you look at these costs each year, that we would need to do all of this and maintain our facilities with all the square footage we have. Got to give it to Dr. Bolt for such great planning and working with vendors and her procurement, getting the best prices possible, but also maintaining our facilities to the state, they are very proud of that department. And that's our budget building blocks.
Before you move on, I want to, so, important point, buses are not on this capital list, right? That's a separate matter, although they're capital asset for all practical purposes, so keep that in mind, they're another hundred and forty, sixty thousand dollars apiece. And your feeling on the two hundred thousand dollar a year, tell me the correct name?
Infrastructure and operations.
You believe that's going to continue into the future?
Correct.
I don't know, I'm just curious if you want to have questions from the board before Bonnie launches into her part of this, or you just want her to charge through?
Why don't we let Bonnie charge through?
Sounds good, thank you. So preliminary budget drivers for the county's budget, I'll start off with the revenues, and I'll begin by saying we're still very much in a preliminary stage of our budget development. We don't have all the answers yet, like you heard from Dr. Grimsley, schools don't have all the answers yet either, so we're still in that same mode. But what I can talk about is we have received departmental requests, nothing out of the ordinary as I've been going through those, we've received requests from our regional agency partners, and I'll be working with the treasurer and the commissioner later this week on the revenue projection development for some of the major revenues like real estate and personal property. Specific to a couple of our revenues that we have seen increases in over the last couple of years, and those are meals and lodging and the sales tax receipts, we have seen this year that those are beginning to level off as we, as we, with the treasurer, have been monitoring those revenues each month. So I'm not expecting a significant, if any, increase at all there for fiscal twenty-five. We also do know that the governor's budget included zero dollars from the Forest Sustainability Fund. That decreases our budgeted revenue by about twenty-four thousand dollars right off the bat in fiscal twenty-four. There is some hope, though, because there are amendments in both the House and the Senate to include five million dollars statewide in both years, fiscal twenty-five and twenty-six. And if allocated as, if approved as part of the final budget, and then if allocated as that funding was allocated in fiscal twenty-three, that could result in about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in new revenue for Rapid Hanuk. Another big question mark is interest earnings. You'll recall that we significantly increased that estimate of interest earnings in the fiscal twenty-four budget to the tune of about three hundred thousand dollars in the adopted budget, and then when the board chose not to increase the meals and lodging rate, that was able to happen because of increases in real estate taxes, tax receipts, personal property tax receipts, and a big piece of that was increased interest earnings. We don't know how long those rates are going to be at the current levels for interest earnings. As of December twenty twenty-three's Federal Open Market Committee meeting, the Federal Reserve expected to decrease the rate by three-quarters of a percent over the course of twenty twenty-four. The next opportunity for them to take a look at that rate will be in March, and we expect that they're going to out, update the outlook for what they plan to do in calendar year twenty-four at that meeting as well. So we'll be tuned into that as we march down the path of our budget. Library funding, there are budget amendments in both the House and Senate advocating for an additional two and a half million dollars in statewide library funding in each year of the biennium. I don't have an estimate at this time of what that might mean for Rapid Hanuk, but we'll be watching that moving forward. On the expense side of our budget, certainly, we will be looking at maintaining the existing levels of the service, including recent years' enhancements made to fire and rescue services. When the county administrator fine-tunes his recommendations for his recommended budget, we'll also be looking at maintaining commitments to regional partners as we have in the past. Those partner agencies like the jail, like the juvenile center, provide services to our residents, and we need their help, and that's why we continue to fund them as partner agencies. On the compensation side of the puzzle, the governor's budget assumes a little bit different for state-supported local employees than it does for school employees. And the things that are included in the governor's budget are a one percent bonus for full-time employees effective December one, twenty twenty-four, so that's mid-year fiscal twenty-five. Also, a one percent bonus for full-time employees effective December one, twenty twenty-five, that again is mid-year fiscal twenty-six. And then a one percent pay increase effective July one, twenty twenty-five for fiscal twenty-six. On the county side of the budget, each one percent gross expense, and when I say gross expense, I'm not netting out any state revenue that would come in, is about fifty-eight thousand The budget, there's a budget amendment in that would add four, a four percent increase in fiscal twenty-five and change the one percent that's currently in the budget, in the governor's budget for fiscal twenty-six to four percent. The bonuses under this budget amendment would remain in each year. And then, in addition to that, there are several amendments in the House and Senate that are office-specific, and most of those, as you might imagine, focuses, focus on sheriffs and their employees. One such increase is a five percent increase for sheriffs and their employees, another is- Another is a 9% increase for communications positions and sheriff's offices. And those, those would be increases relative to the state-required salary, not the local salary. So a 5% increase, for example, on the comp board salary, not necessarily the higher local salaries. We have done some checking in with our surrounding localities as to what they might be planning for pay adjustments in fiscal '25. And we have heard a range of between 3% and 5% with most reporting that at least their initial recommendation will be about 5%.
Same for the schools too. That's what about with the region is same.
The county too will have a health insurance increase. Reports are that we should expect between 7% and 9%. So like the schools, we're assuming 8% as we start our budget as well until we learn our specific rates. And we should learn our, our specific rates probably in the March timeframe. But just to give you an idea, an assumed 8% increase means an increase of $71,000 in expenses. And that's assuming maintaining the existing employee, employer percentage splits. In terms of workers' compensation, the last couple of workers' compensation audits have returned a portion of the premiums to us. That's because our experience is that we don't have a lot of workers' comp claims, thankfully. And so we are using that audit data to fine-tune our renewal from the start, which means we can budget lesser cost from the start. But what we want to do is balance that so we don't then at the end of the year when we have the audit, end up having to pay a big true-up. We're just trying to balance it out and getting to a good starting point. So I expect there will be a slight reduction in the budget there. We also, like was the case in fiscal '24, where we had a reduction in our Children's Services Act or CSA costs. We expect another reduction in those costs in fiscal '25, given our actual cases under the CSA. We reduced that budget by $300,000 in fiscal '24. And based on conversations with the social service director and the community policy management team, or CPMT, which has oversight for CSA, we're anticipating that budget being reduced by another $100,000 or 10% in fiscal '25. Interestingly, fiscal '25 is the 20th and final year of the existing debt service on the Virginia Public School Authority 20, excuse me, 2004 projects that were issued for school projects back in 20, why am I struggling with that? Back in 2004?
2004 is a long time.
Yes, 2004. It was a long time ago. That was less gray than I remember. So the 20th and final year of the existing debt service is $189,000 in fiscal '25. Just to give you a sense, the largest budget for debt service in the recent past was $650,000, and that was back in fiscal 2013, when instead of just one series of bonds being outstanding, there were three series of bonds outstanding that had an original combined principal of $7.9 million. And just because it's really easy to forget in year 20 what the year one issuance was even for, I've provided a box there on the right that shows what those bonds were used for. And there were four projects at this school, at the elementary school totaling about $2.4 million: a new roof, HVAC upgrades, electrical upgrades, and the RCE as classroom addition. And then there were two projects at the high school, the auxiliary gym that cost about $850,000, and upgrade of the high school track and field at slightly under So as we think about, as we think about going into the future and our CIP combined with the schools' capital needs, we already saw where the schools, over the next seven years, will have about $2.1 million in capital needs. That doesn't include the buses, as the county administrator pointed out. Nowhere have we, have we shown a slide related to the courthouse costs this evening. But what I wanted to do is provide a slide with just a baseline $1 million bond issuance. What is that $1 million, and you can do any iteration you want to thereafter, what is that likely to cost us? And I've broken it down here. The blue is the principal for, for a million dollars over 20 years, and the orange is the interest each year over 20 years. The structure that's shown here is, again, a 20-year borrowing at level payment. And you know it's level payment because every year's payment combined principal and interest is the same amount there, about $77,000 for ea, for each million at 4.5%. Now, I did this slide sometime last week, assuming that we might be able to issue at 4.5%. I spoke with Davenport, which is a financial advisory firm, just yesterday, talking about the Virginia Resources Authority, which is a pooled financing opportunity and what we might actually be able to experience in interest rates there. If we were to have been in the most recent pool, the interest rate there, because the state has a AAA bond rating, was about 3.5%. He advised that if we were to RFP out for a bank loan, we would likely experience at least one percentage point over that that we could experience through the pooled financing. So as we think about, you know, even those, even the bus financing, as we think about the courthouse financing, and as we think about the 2.5 mil, or $2.1 million that you have for CIP, we're going to need to start thinking about these pooled financings. And that's why in the previous slide, I let you know that, at least in the recent past, we had debt service as much as $650,000 for an original $7.9 million total bond.
Over, do you have any sense of what the interest rates were back when we had three, three bonds under repayment at the same time?
Yes, I did. I looked at that just today. And the coupons, the way the bonds are structured each year is a coupon, and the coupons range from like 4% up to 5.5%.
Okay. In the ballpark of what we're talking about now. Higher?
Higher, yes, higher. I also put that slide there, just if we could go back to that, Dr. Grimsley, thank you. I also put that there thinking there's, there's logically going to be some questions from the public and among us as we're talking about the development of the budget. If the governor's budget stands and we, over the next two years as a community, do achieve that additional $1 million in school funding, how's that going to be put to use? Well, we might, may want to consider thinking about putting some of that to use for the school capital and saving that interest there. Of course, that's logical to us, but just, just reiterating as we start down this path. And then my final slide is just the county's budget schedule. I won't go through each of these line items, but the county administrator's budget presentation is scheduled for one month from now, March 13, 7:00 PM at the library. Then there will be a series of budget work sessions with the board. And then the budget and tax rate public hearing will be two months from now, April 15, here in the gym at 7:00 PM. And sometime thereafter, the board will adopt the budget for both the county and the schools.
Questions about any, anything we've presented to you tonight?
Table's so long, I don't, okay, sorry. So Dr. Grimsley, last, last year, we talked about recently, we were, we were in a position where we had to cover basically half a million-dollar deficit. Child Services Act savings became helpful as it came down to the 11th hour in bridging that gap. And there was that other category of, of capital improvement funds. And I don't know if that's what Mr. Curry alluded to. That's, that's basically a state, it's, it's state funding to the $200,000, it's there. And we, we determined that 60% of that last year was flexible, that it, it could be drawn upon for...
Recurring operation type.
Maintenance expenses, but, so I hope, obviously, that we can stay away from doing something like that again, because I recognize that that is a category in and of itself for capital improvements. And so to that end, all, all I want to say is, I hope that, and I've said it, I said it recently in another study, and I just hope that we will have a direct conversation that's not speculative about what you, what you will need and what, from a county general fund perspective, as we look at our budget, we'll be able to cover in terms of our local contribution. And I think it, so far, I feel like the picture looks better, hopefully, than it did last year. But I also think that Ms. Jewell has identified where we're seeing some softening on the revenue side on our, our end. So I, I want to make a commitment, at least as one member of our board, to leave that CIP fund alone. And I would hope that we can work together early and often to not end up in an 11th hour scramble to cover a deficit that we could have seen coming. So I hope that we'll just remain in close communication so that we can preserve funds like the CIP fund in its intended form, so as not to cover a gap. But I think so far, the picture is, feels better than last year. And I hope I'm right about that.
Anybody? Board members?
I just wanted to say, when we realigned the debt service from the school to the county side six years ago, that seemed like an awful lot of money and an awful long ways off. When Mr. Curry came on board and worked with Dr. Grimsley to get that aligned correctly on the county side, from the school side. And it's just nice to be at a point where we're looking at the last payment and to know we've gotten there and, and to clear that debt from 2004. It's really a great accomplishment. And thank you all, Ms. Jewell, Mr. Curry, and Dr. Grimsley for your hard work on the budget.
Well, I'd like to thank you all for hosting us so graciously, as you do every year, and showering us with these really lovely gifts from the kids and the presentations. I look forward to this every year. I feel like this gathering of the two boards is just a really simple way to bring our community together. So thank you. Thank you for your presentations. I'm never, I never cease to be amazed at how clear and direct on the county side and on the school side these can be, because there's, and I don't even know because I'm not involved, but I can imagine there's a lot of moving parts when you have to put this stuff together. And there's a lot of guesswork. So I remember last year, it was, I think, the best word I could use for an anomaly in terms of a budget year coming from the state. And there was a scramble at the end. But from my perspective, that was the fault of nobody. And we had to work together to get through it. So I just look forward to working with you all. And again, thank you for hosting us.
So, yes, like, like my other colleagues have said, I look forward to working with you all. And of course, I'm especially excited about it because, you know, I have, well, a little one running around in these halls. So I take particular interest in all things school. I agree with Supervisor Woodson. I hope that we work together early and often. I'm looking forward to working side by side. Mr. Mills here, I have always admired his leadership. So it's, it's an honor to be able to work with him, an honor to serve our community and, and the school. And then one last little comment. I'm sad that they all left at Workforce Solutions at Laurel Ridge. I have quite the reputation for instructor recruitment. And I went hard after Tina. So I, I sat here smiling. You have a gem. And, and Tina and in Catherine Waters, as you all, I think the community knows by now, Workforce is, is my heart. And I think it's really important. And I'm so glad to see it here in our high schools, so.
I don't want to keep us going too much later, but I did do a little research recently on the number of children that were in the CCLC pre-K programs. And when I heard the number, 125 to 130 children, first of all, in Rappahannock County, I was shocked, because you always hear there's no children. Well, now I'm concerned, there's a lot of children and they're all going to come together at the same time. So when you're doing your strategic plan for the school and looking out, can you give us a brief, you know, what's happening in your mind?
Absolutely. So those are numbers that we've been talking about for a couple of years now, looking at the, the infant toddler numbers coming up to preschool, not too soon after that. And looking at those numbers. So there are concerns, because as I said before, the cap is changing and how they're funding preschool in a public school setting. We did some awesome work not too long ago in the First Step Development Program when Head Start was removed, that funding from here. So I think you'll see, hopefully, we've been in talks with Lisa Payne Wells over at CCLC and some combined efforts to hopefully expand those services for preschool, leveraging all of our available resources, space, whatever we can do to try to, because you're right, we have to accommodate those numbers. And we want them to have a very high-quality early childhood education, which you know is actually directly related to better economic outcomes for not only the individual, but your society as a whole. So it's very directly related. So we do want to make sure we're providing that. So we are in conversations, we're watching the, the funding streams. But you're exactly right, that's something we need to be mindful of. My preschool teachers are already knocking down my door to say, we need one more classroom, 20 preschoolers in one room, it's way too many. And it is, if you want a high quality. In fact, Head Start programs usually won't let you go over about 12 or 13 kids. So you can imagine the burden that is on our teachers who are wonderful and, and take that on. But CCLC, same kind of a thing. So that's something to recognize, absolutely.
Sounds like everybody's working so well together at your level and at the CCLC level. It just is comforting to see how well we work together and you're working with the external educators and, and child services. Because, you know, I've had at least two people in my district say, I can't find a place for my child when I, you know, get called in to go to work. And that was what made me get interested in what was truly going on out there. And this is exciting, but scary at the same time.
Yes. Our employees experienced quite a bit of that too, as a recruitment issue, when they have nowhere to put their kid in the county. I mean, that, that was a barrier for quite a few of our folks this year.
Thank you very much for all your hard work. And I enjoy working with Chairman Mills. Keep us, keep us in the loop and hopefully there'll be no surprises, bad ones anyway, this year. I hope so.
To, to be clear, if, if someone has a three or a four-year-old, they need to come to the elementary school to register?
Oh, good question. So when we did a lot of our work in developing the First Step program, we did receive funding through the Virginia Early Childhood Foundation, through the Mixed Delivery Grant and Preschool Development Grant. So that, there are protocols for that. We still use some of those best practices, including a universal application for three and four-year-olds. So if you have a three or four-year-old preschool age, you can use that same application and we will place you in whichever program makes the most sense for your family. And of course, you have to meet eligibility criteria for certain parts of the program.
And those are available at the elementary or at the school?
They're online under Pupil Services. You can fill it out online, or you can pick it up at the elementary school or at the school board office.
Super.
Anybody else before we go into public comment? Okay. At this time, I'm going to open it up to the public comment.
At this time, I'm going to open it up to the public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please come up to the mic and give us your name and the district you're in. All right, not seeing a rush to the mic.
We have Zoom going, Madam Chair, so I can see if there's anyone here.
We have virtual up? We do.
Anyone on Zoom wishing to speak during public comment?
You see none?
No hands? All right. I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. Now, we're into Board of Supervisor comments. Going to go down the table, Ms. Smith?
Just thanks again to the school board, to the elementary school, to everyone that came out and spoke this evening, and to the students for informing us of all their wonderful activities, sharing musical program and the lovely gifts that we get spoiled with every year. It is a real treat to come out here and have this great meeting with you all. And I look forward to continuing collaboration throughout the budget process. Thanks so much for hosting this evening.
Yeah, just thank you all again. I look forward to continue working with you.
Supervisor Comer?
Yes, thank you again for having us. And like Supervisor Smith just said, that was the first thing I noticed is all the presence. I thought, wow, I want to come to a school board meeting every month. Not like that every month, I'm just saying.
Mr. Woodson?
Sure. Thank you for the hospitality always. And recently, Mr. Curry made an interesting comment in front of Dr. Grimsley, Chairman Mills, and Ms. Donahue. And he said that, in many localities, relationships between local governing bodies and school boards often are fraught with tension and difficulty. And I think that we, I think we can all agree that while there is tension perhaps between our boards, it's of a productive kind. And I think there's a lot of, a lot of robust inquiry from the school side regarding spending and controlling costs, but also delivering a great product to your children and their families. And I think for that, you should be applauded. And I think that we try to be productive in our pushing and pulling and in our fulfilling our obligation to taxpayers, and also trying to do what we need to do to support you all. So I do agree with Mr. Curry that our relationship with you all is a good one. And I hope that we'll continue to exercise this productive and constructive tension to all of our advantage. Thank you again for all of your hard work and the presentation, particularly on the transportation front. You'll be happy to know that I can now move on from that topic. Very thorough and very convincing.
Congratulations.
Yes, just thank you so very much. It's been a very nice evening and can't wait to put my birdhouse up. And, you know, if we can do anything, if you hear any news that we should know, please share it, as you always do, as quickly as possible. Thank you.
All right, we got to run down through the school board, see if there's any comments or questions from the school board. Ms. Bennet?
Well, I really do appreciate from my, like, when I was in high school, I was actually a representative to the school board. And I remember there being a big fight every time between the school board and the supervisors. And I just love the interest. Again, I'm just saying the same thing again, but I love the interest that everybody takes in really understanding at a pretty granular level what's going on. And it's unique and it should be cherished. And I want to put one more plug in for something you can come to the school with your kids this weekend. Mini golf at the high school, indoor mini golf. For the, it's a fundraiser for our band program. And that just didn't, that just fell off the table. So, one to six, and come and play some putt-putt at the high school.
You stole my thunder, that's what I was going to do. I just want to thank everybody. It's truly a pleasure. I sometimes watch, see other boards and I cringe. And this is a pleasure. I appreciate it.
I'm just glad you guys got to see some of the things that the students and the teachers are doing in the schools. I'm very thankful for the opportunity that I have to see it every day. It's amazing to watch the kids' faces light up. She didn't clearly give you the, and the, the kids love Ms. Farnham's class. The catapults, the picture frames. Kids are asking to go down there during study hall, during their time off, during any free time, they want to go work with Ms. Farnham. Ms. Waters is the same way. If they're out in the field, behind the school, they're out in, well, behind school. They're putting on gear, they're doing search and rescue, they're learning about loading patients. Kids are fanatic about it. Those two teachers, Mrs. Fincham, those kids are excited every day. I talk to them every day, every day. They're like, "We did this, but this is coming up, you know, anything about this." Kids are loving it. Kids are coming to school, kids are excited, they're fired up. And we're getting more and more people that, like, you know, they want to get their kids in. Rappahannock is setting a trend. And it's a very good one. Thank you, Ms. Jewell, for a very informative presentation. Especially, I love that 5% for shared studies. That was nice to find. Glad you guys got to see that part.
Ms. McColl?
Don't really have anything to add. Everybody said what I would say. Just that it's great to work with a group that, you know, comes to the table and is really concerned about the students and wants to make a difference in the schools and wants to do the improvements for the teachers. And it's just fantastic. So, glad to be part of the team. Learning a lot. You guys ask a lot of really good questions.
You know, I remember my first year on the school board, dealing with budget, was actually 2001. And I remember the feeling like a Drake and from a fire hose feeling as well. So, buckle up. You're doing great. I would like to say that, you know, we are committed to working together because that's when we do our best for the student. And we recognize that. I do want you to know, you know, we had seen that the General Assembly was targeting 10% to 12% for the next two years. As far as the numbers were running, you know, we started out with 5%. We said, "We've got to put a package together," right, as far as the board's concerned. We start out with 5% as a target. Were you working with 8%? We don't know. It's 8%, that's what we're working with. And I want you to be familiar with those two numbers if you're going back and reviewing all of these numbers later. Those are ones that we feel we have to conscientiously set out. And of course, they're subject to the General Assembly outcome. Also, yesterday, Ms. Comer sent an email with some great questions, right? And we're answering those questions. But my point is, as the process continues to go on, if you have questions, send them to us. We'll try to get some answers and get them shared. Because Ms. Comer's questions, great questions. And we need to be sharing that type of information as we build the budget. So, I think that's it.
Yep. Entertained a motion for adjournment for the Board of Supervisors?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
You have a motion of second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
All right, the board will take a recess while the Board of Supervisors dismisses. And we'll be back in here in five minutes.
Before you leave, do not forget your treat from culinary in the cooler back here.
It's been almost 10. I guess, you know, just like the kids, we don't want to leave recess. Too much fun. All right, on the agenda, we're at 7:1, opening comments, welcome back. That's my welcome, that's my comment. Recognition of Clerk and Deputy Clerk Appreciation Week. What are we doing for that?
So, both of them are not here, for great reasons. But this is also the time.
Excerpts and in.
But we brought our wonderful previous deputy clerk back. And Gail is always so willing to jump in wherever is necessary. So, thank you, Gail, we appreciate you so much. But we do honor both Amy Newman and Michelle Berta as our clerk and deputy clerk. And they'll receive their little gift when they return.
Yeah, we do appreciate that they do a lot for us, to keep us in line.
Thank you.
Remind us of the rules. All right. Donations?
Yes, so we do have a couple of donations here. Let me check. From Headwaters, they are sponsoring the Scholastic Bowl Tournament, the state tournament. Thank you so much. And then also, Mr. Hunter gave a $1,000 donation to Rappahannock County Schools.
Okay. I think that was it?
That's it.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes from January 16?
So moved.
Has a motion from Mr. Grove?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bennet. Any comment? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? So, order. Mr. Grove, did you have a chance to review the bills?
I did, and everything looks to be in perfect order.
Thank you. Is there?
Fifty-six percent, I think.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No movement.
You have a motion, Ms. Bennet? Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Rubin. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? So, order. The calendar.
So, 9.1, I will invite Assistant Superintendent Dr. Carol Johnson to talk about the school calendar.
Good evening, members of the board.
Good evening, Carol.
And Mr. Chairman, thank you for welcoming your friendly calendar lady for the annual update of recommendation for a calendar. So, just in the first slide, just a reminder of the basic framework that we look at when we begin thinking about next year's calendar. We do aim for 180 days for the 990 hours, which we typically follow with the 990 hours. There are some rules in the code as far as making up days that are missed due to implement weather. However, because we have a longer school day than other school divisions, we fortunately have not had to look at makeup days for a while. The school day is required to be 5.5 hours. I did want to make a slight correction. I double-checked today because I thought there had been some tweaks to the school time. So, our calendar day is now six hours. It used to be 6.25, but with some adjustments with car riders at elementary and an additional break for the high school students, we're down 15 minutes. But we're still well within the 990 hours per year. So, we did have a calendar committee that met in the beginning of January that was made up of teachers, administrators, support, staff. We did invite a parent representative from the parent-teacher organization. Unfortunately, I did not hear back from them. So, we moved forward and solicited parent input through our survey. So, the biggest priority, of course, is that we develop the calendar that is educationally sound. And a lot of this revolves around when the standards of learning assessments are going to be. So, particularly in the springtime, that is when the majority of our students are doing their standards of learning assessment. So, based on the way that the calendar falls, we, a couple of years ago, went to the two shorter breaks. The advantage of that was that, first of all, it kind of broke up the winter semester between March, April, and the end of the year. It gave us some natural breaks to look at. But it also helped us as far as student learning because with a week or six days off, which I'll talk about the six days in a minute, there's a longer time to recoup from being out of school than there is with the three shorter breaks. So, academically, we have felt like that was the, or we believe that's to be the better option. For Rappahannock County Public Schools, our spring break has typically revolved around Easter. So, in order to try to work in a one-week break and also honor the community's expectation, our families' expectations, that we do something around Easter, we kind of end up in a situation where we do a week. And then we also have to take, like, the Friday before Easter and the Monday after Easter. So, that kind of, it's impacting the number of days that we're getting in the second semester. So, also, based on where Easter fell next year, it was closer to when the actual SOL test window was going to be. So, in the past couple of years, we've offered calendars that have two options. One for two shorter spring breaks and one for a one-week spring break. And this year, based on all of those dynamics, we didn't offer the one-week spring break option. So, that was obviously educationally sound considerations for our first priority. The second consideration, this year, we added November 1st as a PD day. That is the day after Halloween. And unfortunately, that's not always the best-attended day, especially for our elementary school students. So, you know, we're like, okay, let's put a PD day this year. So, in trying to develop a second calendar, we did take that November 1 day out because we realized that this year, the two days before Thanksgiving break were not well-attended. So, for instance, with just a typical day, we pulled out, we had 27 to 30 absences. The day prior to Thanksgiving this year, we had 69 absences. So, the trends of the counties around us have been to move to that week-long Thanksgiving break, which, you know, kind of brought it to the attention, obviously, of some people in our committee. But when we looked at the data, it kind of, you know, made sense that that week-long break could actually help us as far as our attendance because that is one of the things that we are looked at for accreditation as well. There was consensus to maintain our current winter break. We do have a lot that goes on first semester, trying to get our first semester to end by the Christmas break. So, that's something that staff, especially high school staff, has really appreciated is that after that big push, they do have that break to be able to recoup. This year, we were actually able to figure out a way to have a later start date. When we looked at our traditional start date, the new teachers were going to be coming back in July. And actually, all teachers may have come back a day in July, which was pretty startling. So, we did, you know, try to look at a way to make the later start date, which was by moving the end of school to those, that week after Memorial Day. So, we've been able to finish up before Memorial Day a lot of years. The calendar committee felt that in order to get that later start date, that it would be a good trade to go after Memorial Day. Again, priority five, to have the high school semester end at winter break so that we don't come back and students have to spend a week trying to remember everything they learned before Christmas. And then number six, someone, we did get a suggestion for the four-day weekend at Labor Day. There is, one of the regulations somewhere says that schools shall have the Friday off before Labor Day. We've received a waiver for that because of the number of implement weather days we have throughout the course of the school year. And with the later start date, that really wasn't an option. Then, the next priority, the whole week at Thanksgiving break, was offered as an option in the two choices this year. Priority eight, we did, staff did request that we try to have some PD work days around the time that report cards go home because, you know, the grade period ends and then they have five days in which to get all their grades together and get report cards out. So, that was something we tried to honor, to have a work day close to the time that those grades were due. Then, number nine, conference days. We actually printed out a lot of calendars for other school divisions this year, and they don't have parent-teacher conference days in there. And I'm like, well, you know, why are we the only ones doing this now? But, you know, I don't know if they've gone to a model where, you know, they meet with parents on an as-needed basis, or if they just don't put it in their division calendar. But for us, with two schools, you know, we have to do it together and we have to set aside a day for that. We did discuss maybe trying a different format for it, but elementary teachers in particular felt that that time is very... felt that that time is very much appreciated by families, to be able to come in and meet with the teachers at the elementary level, we talked about a potential way to make it more beneficial for the high school as well. And then the last priority, to end before Memorial Day, and in order to have a later start date, this, this is not an option. So, two calendars were presented for a vote, a vote by our schools, both calendars featured 176 days of instruction, they both had two full parent teacher conference days, eight or 7.5 professional development days, high school teachers consistently request that at the beginning of the second semester, that we have workdays so that they can prepare for basically their new year, they're, they're starting over again from scratch, and really need, feel that they need that time to plan for their new semester. And then this year, we did have either five or six early release days between the two calendars, so really, the only difference is the Thanksgiving break that was offered an option two for a week. So, the survey was sent out to staff and parents via email in January, we did post it on Facebook this year, which was a new experiment for us, and that actually, you know, we got a lot of important feedback from that, so I think that's something that we will continue to do. And, and I think that overall, that social media conversation had a positive impact on the survey results, because I looked back just out of curiosity, I think one year, we had maybe 137 people who responded to the survey, last year was 179, and this year, we had 203 people who responded to the survey, so, very early on, and, and then, as you can see at the end, Calendar B, that had the week-long spring break, just took it away, so 77% of the people who responded had voted for that one. And so then, I had shared with you the actual survey results, so that you got to see those along with the 43 comments that were shared by the different people who chose to comment. Out of those, there were quite a few who mentioned having the, the one week for spring break, so there were 16 people who, who said that they would really like for us to go back to a week-long spring break. There were comments about ending before Memorial Day, I counted one of those. The half-days at the end of the school year just really upset some people, and I, I get that, I would like to offer, because, you know, the comments that say, well, those are just wasted days for our kids, so, in those, those last three days that we would have, some of the things that go on, that I know of during those three days, we have award ceremonies for our students, where peers acknowledge other peers for the wonderful job that they've done in specific areas, we have an elementary school seventh-grade graduation during those three days, that, you know, helps to motivate other children to, to accomplish that. We had, we can use those days, or we do use those days, we have Field Day, and people tell me, well, Field Day, they're not going to come, well, that's one of the days where we get to actually celebrate all of the physical activities that the kids really emphasize the whole child, and then, Dare Day, and the Pride Day activities that happen at the high school, those last three days are the perfect opportunity to hit those parts of the curriculum, social emotional learning, character virtues, all of the things that we want to do throughout the course of the school year that we can't do because we're too busy trying to get our students ready for the SOLs. So I'd like for you to consider that those three days, in addition to giving our teachers the time they need to end out the school year, do have valuable activities for our students. And finally, there were 15 people who had positive comments and liked the calendars that we presented, so, you know, I, I felt like the, the Calendar Committee really felt good about what we had put out this year, our, our calendar gets commented on by people from other counties, because we really work hard to try to, to put something in there, like, each month, so that, you know, there's, there are those kind of natural breaks in there for people, you know, to, to kind of keep the spirit going, mental health purposes, and we try to plan them, you know, we, we pair sometimes things up around a holiday, like the parent teacher conferences, you know, just to, to make it easier for parents and students to, you know, that there's going to be those, that they're grouped together. So with that, we do have a recommendation to approve Calendar Two, of course, this is one of the duties of the school board, so we absolutely realize that if the school board would like additional options, the committee will stand ready to, to move forward with that, however, that is our recommendation for this year. So, are there any questions that I can answer?
Sure, I'm going to be one of the people on Facebook that you read about who didn't like either of the calendar options, because I like the week-long spring break, and I think it's difficult to make the argument that it's detrimental to the learning of the children when you've offered a week long at Thanksgiving. So, I heard from a lot of parents who didn't comment on the face, on the, on the social media posts, who absolutely agree with me, because we like to travel for spring break, and by not having a whole week, we're not able to travel. So, also, not a big fan of the last three days being half-days. I would like to see some, you know, I think it's great, and I think it's very important that we do, that we acknowledge the students, but those half-days for our working parents, from what I'm hearing, are extremely difficult, because they're having to cut three days in a row, where they have to figure out what they're going to do with their, with their young children for the half-days, when the kids are all wired up, because they know that school's just about out. So, my, personally, I would like to see another calendar. And I know that you guys work really hard, and it's really hard to make everybody happy, but I just, I, I feel like there, there should be a way that we can accommodate some, some more of this with our parents as far as a week long at spring break, and trying to cut some of those half-days at the end of the year.
I would, in, in thinking of the logistics of that, I would like to ask the board to consider, I mean, we, we have done a vote, and we do have a large number of people who are very much in favor of the Thanksgiving break, and so, I don't think that it would be fair for the Calendar Committee to go back in and say, okay, we're going to take away the week at Thanksgiving and put it on spring break, because we've already had 77% of the people tell us they want that Thanksgiving break, so, the Calendar Committee would be tasked with finding the days in the calendar to have the week break at Thanksgiving as well as a week at spring break, so...
Right, I mean, I'm looking at the calendar that you're recommending, simply taking two days away from the April break, and moving that Friday into the next week would give us the whole second week of March as a spring break option.
And, does that also include the Friday and the Monday around Easter?
That would take the Friday away and give us the Mon, give us, leave us with just the Monday after Easter.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I've, I've definitely experienced that because all the different counties have different schedules, and we have a lot of students who, especially at the high school, who do dual enrollment classes, or who are Virtual Virginia students, with, you know, we have classes with Laurel Ridge, which are, that number is increasing, it can be sort of a huge drudgery when our, when our calendar doesn't really align with the other schools that are, a lot of our students are attending, and those, like, Virtual Virginia, as well as Laurel Ridge have a week-long spring break, and I don't know when that is, I could try to look it up on my phone, but, but I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to engineer it, you know, but, but just, there is, especially when you're taking really challenging collegiate-level classes, it's, it, it can be, add, you know, add challenges to our governor's school kids, add challenges to our kids who are taking, you know, who are, and it's, and it also, we have a driver that has to take the kids to governor's school when, during break, and, and I, I'm not, not that that's the majority of the students, but it's an important segment of our students, and I think one that, we're looking at trying to grow our population and really encourage and retain that sort of collegiate level of, of study going on, it'd be worth looking at, not, I, I, I think that, I, I agree with you that, that the Thanksgiving break is a good, you know, it's a good idea, especially when we're, we have very low, low attendance during that week, and that's important, but just looking at, just how other schools that our students are also enrolled have their time, because it is mentally exhausting to never really have a break, like, I speak from my son, who just graduated, his experience, you know, he's going to Utah for his spring break this year, and, and it's just really nice, he has that week to be able to do that and reset, so I just want to have that out there, that, that there is that sort of mental, sort of wear and tear that happens when you don't ever really get a break.
Carol, is there a reason, is there a reason for, for March 10, 11, on your first break on that second calendar? Was there rationale for that? It's, it's Friday, Monday, Tuesday?
We, we have traditionally done Friday, Monday, Tuesday, or, yeah, and I, I can't think that there was a specific reason for picking those three days in March.
I'm thinking if you add 17 and 23, take away 10 and 11, you got a, you got a week.
Yeah, you could, you could...
I mean, you're still getting a Friday off, and I understand there's a, a need for a break between January and April for Evan's...
Yeah.
But I'm just, I'm just kind of looking at it, I don't know. But, again, you're committing a, a ton of work.
A lot of work, it is, it is a lot of work that was done, for sure.
It would be interesting to see what the survey would say, if 10 and 11, if, yeah, 10 and 11 were moved to, to 17 and 23, and see what would happen with that. It would, it would eliminate two days in March, but add two days in April around Easter.
Well, it's the problem with Easter, is that Easter constantly flexes.
Yeah, it is, and this year, it's a...
This year, Easter happens to be terrifically late, so I think it would be better off if we adopted, if we're going to do a week off, if we just simply looked at the calendar and said, the, the first full week in March every year is going to be our spring break.
Well, then what are you going to do with Easter?
You give it, you give it the Monday after Easter, unless you want to cut some of from the week of Thanksgiving. I like the idea of the Thanksgiving break, I think that's great.
So, thank you for putting up with everybody's criticism, because that's actually what you got for the calendars, there's very few positives, and thank you for taking on that project, because I can't imagine the stress that that put on you, because that had to be very demoralizing, because there was a, coming from a lot of angles, the biggest thing that I heard was, was the, the half-days, parents don't like those half-days, we all know that, but a lot of staff and a lot of kids like the multiple days off throughout the month versus the one week, because it gives them a break while they're going through testing, going through different processes, and then it heads out. We, years ago, we went through a stretch where we didn't have that break in March or, or whatnot until end of April, and people were burned out, but it has to be built around the days, I think very wisely, when kids are traditionally not coming to school, so just like with Thanksgiving, that's brilliant, they're not going to be here anyway, why aren't we open for business, why are we hurting our numbers, our A D M? Good luck, I would remind the board that we only hear the dissent, as Ms. Johnson said, 77%, we're very happy with the calendar, we don't hear those people, you don't hear the overwhelming majority that's, yeah, that's fine, it works for us, you hear the five, or six, or 10, or it could be 20, whatever, dissent, and we cannot please everybody, so we had to find a common middle ground and go with it, and if those days work for staff and majority of parents, and those days work for staff and majority of parents, we're not going to please everybody, just like today's weather, it's not going to happen. But thank you for putting up with it, because that, that can not be a fun task.
It, it is, it's a lot of work, and, and, and you do it faithfully, but, I think, is there a deadline associated with us getting this through before it puts the school system in a bind?
I think typically by April 1st.
Okay, so we could table this for a month, we could say to Dr. Johnson, can you please research Option Three, based upon the board's input, and let's put out another survey, but only discuss Option Two and Three. And, and Option Three, if it could reflect Larry's, the last thing that you spoke about?
Yeah, about moving 10 and 11.
Moving 10 and 11 down to...
I know it won't solve every problem every year, but let's do it one year at a time, move 10 and 11 to 17, 23.
And then, the idea of, you know, the, the first week of March every year, or the second week, whatever we pick, right?
Right.
And whatever is picked, it's good to have a question to say, hey, not this year, but in following calendar years, what do you think about this?
Yeah.
And we'll see what the feedback is on that, but, but like Mr. Rubin said, you know, we're going to get the noisy ones.
I mean, I would just say that if we have a count, an Option C, Carol, you had mentioned that the April, like, a long April break could be deleterious to SOLs, so, I mean, I think if, I would just, I think that Option, Option C, if we cast you, it would be for you to choose as the committee what, what, how we might fit a week's spring break.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Just do it, just however educationally a week's spring break could be.
So, let's have Options, Option Three, so far, we have one, one, two, three, Option Three will assess where, where to have the one week, a contiguous week, and, 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 Two, will take a look at, hey, can we do a full day instead of three half-days, or what can we do at the end of the school year to concatenate end-of-year activities so that we're not here for three half-days? And that'll be what Option C is, we'll throw that back out, and a month from now, we'll make a choice.
It just seems like, the way that the surveys work, you don't get to go to the next question until you have already chosen Calendar One or Calendar Two, you don't get a chance to say, I'd like a different calendar during, in the format of the survey, so that, we might get a result we're not expecting, because people chose Calendar Two because they liked it best, and between those two, they might have chosen that third one you're talking about.
And we'll ask the people to call their representative and tell us what they're thinking.
Yeah.
They're calling.
Well, I haven't had one.
Have you had anybody?
Not one.
Well, but, I mean, I replied to the Facebook thing, and I asked people to reach out to me, and also, also to express their opinions on the social media, so that's...
But then they, they need to, they need to, the people who want to have a say have to say something, I think. I mean, I have a hard time with, with folks who complain and then don't have...
Bring it to the committee, yeah, you need to bring it to the committee to get it heard.
Yeah, I mean, that's why they put out the sign.
So, am I to...
You gotta respond to the thing.
Am I to understand that when I go back to the Calendar Committee and we work on an Option Three, that I will be putting out another survey that would, that offers Option Two and Option Three?
I think that's a good idea at this point, and let's stick with Two.
And you can blame us.
Yep, definitely blame us, because obviously, we're to blame.
It's, it's the board's prerogative, it's, it's your duty.
And, you know, I do...
Blame everybody but Chris.
I do hate throwing it back at you, but it's probably the best thing for us to do, and it will, you know, a lot of considerations going into it, and more considerations.
The half-days are also, it's, from a teacher's point of view, it's, the half-days are, are getting geared up for the next half-day in a lot of ways in the afternoons.
Yeah.
Because it is a wild time.
It is a wild time.
All right.
Well, thank you for the opportunity.
Dr. Johnson, thank you very much for your work. Next, I don't...
Madison Agreement.
Madison Agreement.
Oh, boy, do we get to sign it again?
We get to sign it again, and Madison County approved it last night, so it had no changes in its iteration, so it's the same, so we recommend that you approve the Madison Agreement to allow us to receive additional supplemental basic aid.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I, I was, I, I did want to remind folks that it is reviewed annually. and between the two superintendents. Uh, there is a benefit to our county, the scope of which I think is a quarter million dollars potentially in that arena. And there are things going on that, between the two counties, that are offered that are, that a lot, have a lot more benefit than, oh, hey, do you want my used bucks? No, thanks. Right. There, there's educational offerings, there's training offerings, and I think we also offer a staff member for a certain number of hours or something.
We do sociocultural evaluations, so that's a big.
So, so there, there is a great benefit, I think, to both divisions. Perhaps we benefit more, but, uh, anyway, I would say thanks Madison for being a good neighbor and continuing. We've been doing, I remember when we started this, Dr. Chapel was here, and, uh, I thought it was ingenious at the time. And, uh, so I'm, I'm glad we're able to continue to do it. We'll vote on it at the end of the meeting. Any questions about it?
I was just wondering if we're taking advantage of the two C T E slots that are listed, or if that hasn't been. I feel like we've beefed up the C T E in-house considerably.
Typically, um, it used to be pretty stringent on which C T E slots you could, um, utilize. So, before it was cosmetology with culinary, and we did revamp that to make it a little more vague. What do you have room in that we're interested in in this population of students? Uh, so that's helped. Typically, it still is for us, our students might take advantage of cosmetology because we do not have that program. And, uh, from time to time culinary is the one that attracts Madison.
Good, thank you very much. B S B A Business Honorable nominations, do we have any ideas on that this year, on the roll? I mean, in the previous years, we've had things like pretty evident choices for us. I didn't know if we had any ideas. I don't have any ideas this year.
Well, talking about preschool, does C C L C count?
C C L C?
Well, C C L C is a.
We've recognized Headwaters before.
Did we do C C L C before? Oh, with First Step, we did, yeah.
We did.
We did. Any ideas?
Well, but that was a while ago.
It was a while, yeah.
C C L C is a sort of.
Well, last, I think we reached out to Walmart one year or two, remember?
We did Walmart last year, it was Walmart, it was Eldon Farm, it was.
Atlantic?
Um, no, Oakview Bank one year for, yeah, my future.
Didn't we do, um, there was a.
Eldon Farm.
Yeah, we did Eldon.
I would, I think C C L C would be a good one myself.
Have you ever done, I mean, Headwaters technically?
Headwaters did because they had their twenty, twentieth, twentieth anniversary and we did it that year.
We did, yeah.
It was not that long ago.
We could just skip this.
Just won't do it.
Just skip it.
Okay.
Is there a report from Headwaters represented tonight?
Yes, there is. Okay, yes, I, I was in touch with, with Mrs. Genoli, and this is my report. Headwaters is going to be hosting a Next Step Expo at the high school on Monday, March ninth, from nine to, nine A M. to three P M. for the seniors. And the expo is a one-stop shop for R C H S seniors to receive support in a wide range of areas, including how to pay for college, loan options and scholarships, where to find a job. That's good. Building a professional network, discovering local trade programs, developing a budget and more. And they're going to be giving away over a thousand dollars in cash prizes and gift cards, and they're providing lunch for the seniors from New Iberia. That's great, I wish I was a senior. I mean, I already have a job, I guess. But Headwaters is working with, um, R C P S, C C L C and four H to work towards, towards four-day, full-day summer programming, um, that would be an option for local families that would be low-cost. It'll be for primarily the months of June and July, and they will be unveiling information at the family engagement night that we heard about earlier that'll be in February twenty-eighth. And the new read program is going well, and students took a trip today to the public library, and they learned how to find a book at the library and how books are organized and how to check out a book. So, that's what I've got.
Thanks. M V G S?
We meet, uh, this Thursday.
All right. Uh, is there any public comment this evening remaining? Run out of public. Any public comment regarding the budget?
Anybody on Zoom?
Anybody on Zoom that would like to make comment?
Please raise your Zoom hand if you'd like to make a public comment. I see one. Victoria Cooper, if you want to unmute. See if we can hear you. Go ahead, ma'am. Oh, I can't hear you.
Hold on, Victoria.
Make sure her volume's up.
Is there a chat window available for Victoria to type in?
If you can't get the audio, you can definitely chat, um, put your message in the chat and we can get your feedback.
Victoria, can you chat? Can you type our, uh, your comment? I don't have any audio, Victoria. Hey, can you hear me, Victoria? Can you put your thumb up if you hear?
Yes, she's hearing us.
Okay, yeah, good. I don't see the chat window.
It's here.
There we go.
You can't see the chat? All right, um, if you want to email me, you can, or call us, and we will definitely get your comment, okay?
Sorry, sorry for the tech, we, we'll work through the tech problem, but sorry, Victoria. But follow-up, please.
Yes, please.
Can she call, can she call somebody's cell phone and put her on speaker?
Is there modality that?
Maybe we could, if she wants, she's.
We could try that.
Let's try it.
She might be frustrated.
Okay, Victoria, I'm going to give you my cell phone, you ready? Seven zero three, three one four, six five five three. We'll put you on speaker.
Get it done one way or another.
It's always a workaround.
How's your service here?
I've got, I've got all bars.
Oh, yay.
She rings it'll light right up.
There we go.
You have a landline?
Victoria, you trying to give us a call? Give me a thumbs up.
Seven zero three, three one four, six five five three. There we go. All right, Victoria, you're on speaker.
Hi, yes, I am just calling or wanting to comment about this morning with the, um, issue with the weather, with the school not calling a two-hour delay, um, and how bad the roads were on Chester Gap and other backroads.
And do we want to comment on that, or?
Well, I just wanted to address like that making a, having a two-hour delay isn't like hurting anything. Having a two-hour delay isn't going to hurt the situation, hurt anything, and I just felt like that it wasn't just the right call for this morning, and we have so many employees that travel from other surrounding counties, like over Lu Ray Mountain, which was really, really bad this morning, and from Front Oil, which is really, really bad, um, over Chester Gap. And the safety of our employees should be just as important as our, the safety of our children getting to school. And then as the buses didn't get to go to Chester Gap as they had planned, um, all of the teachers now have to reteach or redo with the students that missed. And that's more of a headache than just calling a two-hour delay or just canceling for everyone. And that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you very much for calling in.
Thanks, Victoria.
Okay, thank you guys for trying to get me in, I appreciate it so much.
Thank you very much. Good night.
All right, have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else this evening? All right, uh, moving on to action items, item thirteen dot one, the calendar is tabled until next month. Is there a motion to approve the Madison Agreement?
So moved.
I have a motion, Mr. Groves, or second?
Second.
I have a second from, is it McFul, right? Was that you?
Yep.
Uh, and, uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? Disordered. And the V S B A Honorable, Mr. Rubin said he had an idea.
Have we awarded Rose Hill a tour?
We did just the first year, we did, we did more recently.
About three years ago, yeah.
Because I know he's done a lot with Ms. Petzow's.
Yeah, that's what we did the first time. A couple of years ago, yeah.
They've given a lot of money to the kids and been a big part of it, so.
We could always do it again.
Yeah.
They're still active and nobody else is there.
Do you want to make a motion that we nominate Rose Hill? We have a motion, Mr. Rubin, nominate Rose Hill?
Second.
Second, Mr. Groves, is there any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? Thank you very much, is there any new business tonight?
I just wanted to let the board know about the, the, um, V S B A Capitol Conference and my experience there. And, and there were some ideas, like, so I, I went, it was exciting and, and, and good to get, to be there. I went on, on, on Fri, on the day, the first day and met with Delegate Weber, and he kind of told me who I should probably visit with, and, and it was a good, it was a good, um, a good visit. We, um, as we know, it didn't end up, it didn't push through all the way, but it's, but things are on the table. I did, I just wanted to say that there were, there was a presentation that was really moving to me, um, about, from this woman named Michelle Peace, this group called Truth Initiative that's about, um, vaping and non-regulated substances that are marketed to kids. And she, and I don't know if you've heard about Truth Initiative, it's very, it's like a, she's, she's at V C U and she basically takes, I mean, people will have bad experiences with over-the-counter things. And it's, was, was mind-blowing the amount of things that kids are taking, but it, but she also will test these, you know, like, is, is, are the ingredients in it what was listed, and they often aren't. And it was a really, it was really eye-opening, um, and people were just gasping through the whole presentation. And she, I just wanted to put that out, that Truth Initiative could be a good, as we're looking towards, I mean, it's just an epidemic of, of a lot of things being pushed on kids and teens and marketed to them. And, and so I, so she really, um, I was just encouraged looking at that and if it might be something that could be helpful to our, to our schools. And then the next day, I met with four different people, I met with Sam Rasool, who's the K-12 Subcommittee Chair and who was encouraging, I met with Senator LaShirice Ayer, her legislative aide, who is, that was significant because she's Surrey County, um, they would also benefit from the cap being lifted. And David Reed is the delegate that did co-sponsor H B seven oh two, um, he's a Democrat from Lowndes County, and, um, thanked him for trying to help us, and also met with Delegate Torian's legislative assistants. And we know it stalled but not dead, and I, I still do feel that people think that because it is in the governor's budget, we still have a chance, as Dr. Grimsley has said, but it was an interesting thing to go, so, thanks.
Right, thanks. Is there any, uh, items for future agenda?
I, I would, I would love to talk about or be able to talk about our five-day after-school program and how we can put something like that together, uh, an extended day for grades five through K or K through plus. I mean, maybe we could do it in cooperation or coordination with Headwaters, or we could do something that way.
So, it's going to take quite a bit of energy, right? So, after the budget cycle's done, maybe talk about trying to do some research.
Yeah, that'd be fun. I mean, I, I don't think we'll do it this year, but I mean, you know, for, to, to think about it for next year would be a good thing to do.
Anything?
That I have heard a lot about.
Yeah.
Anything else? Our next school board meeting is March the twelfth in the same room. It's also the public hearing that the school board does, um, for the budget, for the school budget, uh, on March the twelfth. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I move the board convening in closed session following purpose to discuss and consider the appointment of staff for classified and coaching positions pursuant to Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A one, and a discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders and of offers, and discussion of terms or scope of such contract where discussions in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A two nine.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
You have a second?
Yes, second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? So, we're, we're going to, we're going to recess to another room and we'll be back in, it could take a while. Hopefully not twenty minutes? Okay.